All right, I've got nine thirty. Does anybody else has?
Close enough.
Yep. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a meeting, uh, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, at nine thirty a.m., here at the Powell County Courthouse. Judge's executive office. Connie, if you don't care, could you call a row, please?
Uh, Judge Paul.
Here.
Uh, J L Bowen.
Here.
Dennis Combs.
Here.
Mike Lawper. Brian McKinnon.
Here.
Chad Pack.
All right, looks like we've had enough to form a core. So we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, first thing on our, uh, first thing I want to do is welcome everybody here. Uh, appreciate, uh, everybody coming in and, and, uh, showing our support and, uh, you know, because we've got a good little crowd here, uh, for a special meeting. So thank y'all for coming in. Uh, first thing that's on the list is our twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, proposed budget. And, uh, this is just, uh, uh, coming in saying, hey, we've got it ready. We need to send it to the Department of Local Governments and, uh, our next fiscal court. Maybe we'll do the first reading of it. We don't have to have it approved or anything like that. It's just saying we've got it. Is that correct, Connie?
Correct.
All right. So. And next thing is, uh, bills submitted for payment. Any question on any of the bills?
Major, I'll copy of them.
With the show of silence, I see no questions. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the bills?
How many?
Motion by J L. Second. Second by Dennis. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed likewise? Motion carries. Next is, is the jail. And, uh, not jail, jail. Uh, here, but, uh, uh, first thing is, is, uh, did everybody receive the, uh, jail's pausing procedure manual? And see all, all the changes that was highlighted? All right. Any questions on any of the, uh, procedures that was changed or anything like that? All right.
I think we've covered those in several meetings.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, and I, I thought at first that we'd, uh, we'd, uh, just bring them out and, and read them individually. But there's, we'd be here for about two or three hours, uh, just doing that. So, um, we did, you know, everything looked good as far as my part.
I just need a copy of the minutes to send to the jail inspector.
Yeah. Go ahead. Most likely, motion. Motion is approved by Dennis and, uh, second by Brian. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed likewise? All right. Motion carries. Uh, next thing on the, on the jail, uh, they still was question about, uh, the SAP coordinators, raises and stuff.
Well, it's actually, you know, we're not giving no applications. And the applications we are, applicants we are getting are not qualified. Uh, you're required to have a bachelor degree to do it. And, you know, we've had several that have been sent to the U C and they've got approval. We don't, we don't, ain't the ones that approve or not. David sends them into the Department of Corrections, they're the ones that says, okay, uh, they're approved or not approved. The ones that have been approved, left us and then we told them what the pay was. And it's just, and if you get on N D and look at the pay for the same jobs, even with just one year experience, it's eight dollars more an hour than what they're, what we're paying. And there are jobs all over there for substance abuse counselors. And we kind of double dip on ours. We use them for M R T and substance abuse counseling. So they kind of do double duty where we get the House Bill, uh, five fifty-six completion, uh, monies for the same thing. And it don't go into the SAP, uh, budget line. It's a separate line all to itself. It's just, you know, it's two hundred. I think the end of February, it was, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is what it had done. And our budget for this twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year was two twenty-five. So we hit the budget over mid, in February, prior to that, we busted it. And we were on track to set a record on it this year. On the counselors. And just the month of April, so six months from now, we've not been, we've not been able to go get any SAP, uh, inmates for the SAP program for the whole month of April. Have we gotten one?
We got, we have four of them. We can still up to eighty right now.
Yeah, eighty's means we get, we're required to have a hundred. So we could have had another twenty more. But whenever we got down below eighty, we had, uh, we could, we could actually request more. But until we got down below that.
We couldn't get any.
No. So the ones that we got this month will be graduating in six months. And if we don't do something to get a counselor in here to where we can get back up to it, you know, we're used to doing fifteen, twenty thousand a month, just on the graduates every month. We're gonna have five thousand in six months. Like, was it October, I think is where we figured it up.
Yeah.
So October in the new fiscal year is gonna be way down because of that. Plus, we're not getting our daily forty-five, thirty-four a day for the additional twenty SAP inmates. So.
It's like nine hundred and some dollars a day right now. Just on those twenty beds. That's not counting the other classes either.
And it affects everything.
I mean, your proposal was about fifty thousand dollars.
It's, it's on that page. It's about forty-four, I think it's about where it was. Commissary this week was lower than it's been forever. Because, and that's the only thing I can constitute to was because we're down that many.
Do you think, uh, two dollar an hour raise starting off at twenty would help you out or does that sound a mess?
No. No, not if they're starting at twenty-eight. Other places.
The only comparison I can really give you, and I know it's different. We could find a lower and a higher. But the state that does them in the prisons, the same exact job, it's just in a prison, still a jail. They pay sixty-one thousand dollars starting. And I understand it's different. But that's the most comparison I can give you. It means it's the same exact job, the social service condition one.
And you, you can go on N D and look them up. All the jobs around here in Winchester and Mount Sterling. And there's one here, local. I mean, you can do the research yourself and look at it, see what they're, what they're starting at.
The sad thing is, is, is all that's, you know, well, state government and privatized, you know, and, uh, you know, they, they can basically bill whatever they want to. We, we as a county government, you know, makes it, makes it rough because, uh, you know, we're, we're kind of limited in what we can do, what we can spend.
Well, without it, it's, I don't know, it's on the paper. It's like two hundred and some thousand dollars a year. With it, it's extra forty-four thousand dollars expense. So to me, it's kind of a no-brainer to do, but in the same sense, I know it's, you know, it's government. So gotta be, but if you look at it, I mean, it's just plain arithmetic.
I think we looked at it was, at the nine hundred and some dollars a day we're losing right now, just on the state, the SAP per diem pay. It's twenty-seven thousand a month, two months is fifty-four thousand. And we're already well into the first month of that, that we haven't had, uh, the beds. So, I mean, it's a raise, it's gonna be forty-four thousand, but we're gonna lose fifty-four in, that's for a year. And we're gonna lose fifty-four in two months by not having the beds full. I mean, I understand.
For the raises for who we have, that's not including.
No, that's including.
That's all forward.
That's, that's a forty-four thousand, let another person raises for the other three.
Yeah, that was on, that was everything additionally cost above what they're making right now. One person's been here over five years. The rest of them's been here. One, one, one'll be here a year, um, in August. She had her six-month anniversary, August eleventh. Her year will be up, uh, not August, but, uh, July, I think is when it's. Her year will be up in July, so she'll be, she'll be approaching a year here for, for long. So, Whitney Cook, I, I don't know if y'all got the paper, probably got it in there with me.
No, I, I looked at it yesterday.
I've, I've got it all on there, who's got what time. Whitney's been there the longest. But we need a fourth one. I mean, we've got the facility over there for a hundred-person beds. And if we don't have it, I mean, we just, we're gonna have to renegotiate our budget. We're gonna have to change it.
So then, uh, if you, both ones twenty-two dollars an hour starting, the ones that are already there, you bump those up to the same amount? Or how are you gonna give races to be on that plate?
Well, that's, it's on that page.
Here's what I got with me.
Let me, I, I can ramble.
Would you go in there and, uh?
It was twenty-two starting from what I remember.
Twenty-three after the six-month.
Probationary period. Twenty-four, getting to the first year. And then I think it took away another three or four years to go to the next step. So twenty-two, twenty-three, six-month, twenty-four, year.
So it's twenty-two dollars for a new hire. It's twenty-three, um, after their six-month probationary period. And that's providing that they, you know, it's probationary period. Counselor three, after one year, uh, it's twenty-four. And counselor four would be after four years would be, uh, up to twenty-five. And then after seven years, it's be determined later, you know, later on to see how it's going.
If we were keeping that long?
If we keep it that long, yeah. But I can, uh, screenshot this and text this to y'all.
I'm gonna see him. He's gonna print it off.
That way, I'll give you a current copy of it. I printed everything else off, but, uh, but that.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring copy of it with me.
No, he said. Yeah.
And I'd better everybody start based down on that, on that same sheet, too.
I guess I'm gonna trouble you with the revised budget.
There's, there's no problem on the.
We've not.
We haven't accepted yet. We can, we can do revisions on it until the second, up to the second reading.
And it'll have its first reading next month.
Yeah.
So we move them up to twenty-two dollars an hour starting and then not doing the next two raises. I mean, that, you start and pay up and still save some money, maybe.
And then you're gonna have people that's been here four years making the same thing, the person's gonna be here. And then you're gonna have. Missed off and that'd be a leap.
That's what happens to you, man, some of them raised, but they didn't, nobody else did.
Yeah.
We got a guy that worked seventeen years of experience making the same pay as somebody else.
And that's not right.
No.
That's not, that's not right. Do you find it's fair to me? While we're waiting on Larry, um, something else I wanted to bring up was you told me earlier that the Crystal Plant, I need to get with the Craig Dawson.
Yeah.
Ted called me yesterday and talked to me about maybe doing something with a garden up there on the other side of, uh, where the landfills at. Me and Teddy drove up there yesterday to look. About half afraid to do anything up there because of all the methane gas that's being invented down there. I'm afraid we grow a garden up there. You know what I mean?
Yeah, have, have.
So we, we.
Have bumpkins and gloves.
Yeah, we're, you know, that, don't do that kind of litigation.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
But we had talked about doing, uh, greenhouses. And that's what made me think about the Crystal Plant. There's, there's a lot of property down there that's not being utilized. And he seems pretty confident he could find somebody to donate some greenhouses. And we could use, you know, the inmate work program to work them year-round if we wanted to. And it, it, it wouldn't be a big dent, but it'd help a little bit on food costs, too. They done that one year and then really didn't take care of the food after they got it out.
Yeah, he told me with Manny's Creek.
Yeah, and, uh, they had a bunch of taters at the Al Rocky.
You put a bunch of tomato stuff out and then whatever needs tomatoes.
You go over and give it. Yeah.
Five dollars for a tomato.
Give us ten dollars and they'll take care of it.
Yeah, there you go.
Just kidding.
Just kidding. Abuse of all.
But anyways, uh, does anybody have an issue with that? Do I need to talk to Craig or was that something y'all would be okay with?
I don't have a problem with it as long as Craig.
Yeah. It would be on the back, at the very end where Crystal Plant's at. So the fence, it's the furthest away from the entrance. Uh, there's, you know, there's a lot up there on, on the step, up where the green garage is at. And there's another lot down below that, then there's one to the left. Um, the one to the left, I think they were putting rock or something in there, somebody is. But the one in the middle and the one up there, I mean, we'd use either or.
Yeah, I, I would get, get with Craig because that's, uh, part of that still has contaminated some of the stuff.
That's why we'd want to do a greenhouse, that way it's, you know.
There's still that. People, I, I would use extension agent if you're ideal.
Yeah. Give it Jason.
Yeah.
Death, that, we knew we couldn't put nothing in the ground over there, but, you know, a greenhouse would be. It's got a fence all the way around it, so we'd take level two somewhere.
Okay. So it looks like, uh, new hire currently started out eighteen dollars an hour. And proposals go up to four dollars an hour to twenty-two dollars an hour for new hires. And then after six months, go from nineteen to twenty-three. And then after a year, twenty to twenty-four. And then after four years, twenty to twenty-five. So, and we've got three vacancies right now, so.
No. We got one, two ones.
Uh, three, three employees, three employees and then one vacancy.
Yeah. We're required to have, uh, twenty to one ratio. So Dave serves as one and the four counselors serve as the other four.
Okay.
It's, he, he's written them two or three times to try to get them to change it. And they told him to wait till this year.
But they did, but they've already denied. Where we get federal funding, uh, the federal, we just had a federal audit a few months ago. And they're the ones that dictate that twenty to one. So even if D L C wanted to, they, they won't change it. Because where we get federal funding.
So that'd be, uh, difference of forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-four cents.
That's just a payroll addition.
Yeah, yeah, that's the difference, yeah.
And forty-five for a new counselor.
Did we, did we look at the difference on our, uh, benefits and stuff associated with that?
That's all included.
That's all.
So, so I come over and got with Connie on the retirement and, uh, taxes. Yeah. And all that's figured in that, uh, on that spreadsheet. If you've got that spreadsheet, you might be, that's all that's figured in.
So the raises and the new council for combines will be about eighty-six thousand.
About that with all of it, yeah. If you, if you figure it all in, I believe it's somewhere as close to that.
Close to ninety or eighty-six thousand?
Yeah.
Any questions?
And I'm sorry, I didn't bring one with me to where I could.
Yeah.
That's okay with you.
Unless you want to get in.
No, I've got it certified.
I think it's been a successful program.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm okay with twenty-two, not just that raises, two hundred and a raise the first year is just.
Okay, so you want to increase, uh, the new hires to, to twenty-two?
Yeah, I, I, I do.
What, Brian, how do we interrupt that? What about if we just?
I mean, we can adjust that scale of the year. The year thing, if that's not what you, I mean, we can adjust it, I think.
I think adjusting that, at least a year or the first raise.
Yeah, at least a year, first raise.
Yeah, so I'll take it to twenty-three after a year.
Yeah, that's one thing.
Yeah, I, it would, it would, it would save a little bit that, because you're looking at, uh, four dollar an hour raise at that first year.
Yeah.
Then I think with that factor, you don't get another one for four years.
Yeah.
Yeah, after that, except your cost, cost of living.
We don't, we don't.
That's something we can look at and adjust each year. It's not, sign a contract, you know, that's what it is.
It would be based on, you know, you can get up to this is what, you know, it, like, like it's written on here. SAP Counselor one, two, three, four. You'd have, uh, you know, four levels of counselors. And if you do get promoted to a level two, you know, you'd be making this. If you get promoted to a level three, you'd be making this. Level four, you'd be making this.
It's not automatic.
So do you want to take this after-six-month proposal out?
So just take.
Push that to a year.
Well, you could just take it completely out. And move two to Counselor three, and then Counselor four could be three. And then Counselor five could be four.
I think that would be a better plan.
Yeah. Just move it down, take ten completely out and.
You're just move three, four, five.
I was gonna say something, but I got everybody confused, so.
Yeah, just, I, I'm just kidding, right? That don't make sense.
Just kidding.
All right, so you go back and revisit the budget.
Yeah.
Correct all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not saying that when we're getting other raises, you know.
Two, wasn't there?
We're not saying they can't get other raises in the future, just right now it's for.
Yeah.
Well, this is kind of luck in the word. You know what I mean? Yeah. What they're trying to do is, well, kind of like y'all did the jails. They got promoted to a certain sort of job description. It was automatic lieutenant. And that's kind of why we created those Counselor Ones.
So Counselor One would go to twenty-two, uh, twenty-two dollars an hour starting out.
Yeah.
And then we go up to Counselor Two after one year. Is that gonna be up to twenty-three dollars an hour or go up to twenty-four dollars?
You just have to take that for six months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, uh, the Counselor Three would go, uh, twenty, after four years, yeah. Go up to twenty-four dollars an hour?
Yeah.
Yeah. Make sure, mark all this out. All right.
Hundred seven would be twenty-five.
Depending on how fast you grow it back, it can dictate that.
It's gonna take a while, you know, like. I understand. Cause we're, you know, we're not the only ones trying to get SAP inmates. Usually, we, we're pretty good about keeping rotations. Soon as we know that two or three's graduating, like tomorrow, Dave will send in the Department of Corrections, hey, we need three. We've got up to fourteen days to go get them. So he would always keep it kind of fluky where we can send our transport guys wherever to get them. Or now we're gonna have to submit for twenty, well, after tomorrow, twenty-some inmates.
Once we get somebody hired, it won't take any time to get, get them.
Yeah.
But I have to have some at least. We have to get them within two weeks of requesting the names. So as soon as I hire somebody, they can give me a two-week start date. Then I can request the names and get them within that two weeks.
And we're not the only ones trying to get them, we're letting all the state do it.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Motion? Motion to accept by Dennis. Second, second by J L. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed likewise? Motion carries. All right. Next thing is, is, uh, the, uh, David, uh, David Traggett had found a vehicle he's having the issues of, uh, out of the van that he is right now. And, uh, he found a, uh, vehicle, a man's Chevrolet, four thirty, thirty-one nine. It's got, uh, thirty thousand miles on it. Thirty-three thousand miles on it. Uh, it's a utility truck that's got a ladder rack and, and all that on it. So, uh, they're willing to give us, uh, fourteen thousand trade-in for Dave's van. And like I said, it's, it's having several mechanical issues that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm growing it. And the truck I can carry three instead of one. And, uh, the, the van is gonna need tires, the, he's gonna need his wiring harness, does the heater don't work? Or the air conditioner and so which is that, and I, I just outgrown it. I can't carry really much.
Can you give me fourteen thousand?
Yeah, so, so totally. Total, total cost on this will be seventeen nine.
My best video.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. It's a two thousand and eighteen Ram twenty-five hundred.
Where the money is, you can go and bring this phone here to me.
Yeah.
And they got a color picture of it.
Probably, probably just turn out a general front wheel, yeah.
The guy's already stocked the motor for you.
No, the van's stocked. But Eddie, I gave Eddie the colors. Those aren't colored, they're the color colors.
And I don't think everybody really knows what David Traggett does for the county. I mean, I know you all do, but we would be in trouble without him. So would a whole lot of other places.
Well, and the thing about this, he's standing.
It's.
Well, that's what I start to say, it's, it's just not the county and the jail, you know.
It's, it's, he does stuff for Stan, he does it for the food bank, he's down there helping them. He's an unson hero.
Yeah, I see him everywhere.
Oh, yeah? And don't tell, tell nobody no. He never says no like that.
And that's, and that's one of the problems.
Yeah. You learn how to.
The door and lock right there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's, uh.
Yeah, between, between these unlocking the doors and the chicken hooves, you know.
He's, he's working his way to gold.
Yeah, I agree.
I see no problem with Judge, I'm, I'm in the motion.
Okay. Before, I, I will, uh, release myself from making a vote on this one, so I'm, I'm not gonna vote. And the motion, paper J L?
I'll say.
Second by Brian. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed likewise? Motion carries.
And I'll probably get some money from reserve and create a line maybe for a truck purchase for the jury. If that's okay to do.
All right, next one is, uh, sealed bid, uh, on the duly truck that we had advertised. Uh, we advertised, uh, in the paper for fourteen days on a, uh, truck, uh, for a solid waste. And, uh, we received one bid and that was from, uh, Tanner Dodge. Still sealed, as y'all can say, see. Uh, so we'll go ahead and open it and see. And on this, it says attached, uh, our standard equipment and optional list. So this is on a two thousand and twenty, uh, Ram thirty-five hundred crew cab four-by-four, uh, truck. And bid came in at, uh, forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And, uh, made by Darryl Billings, Tanner Dodge. And I'll go ahead and let y'all take a look at that, see if y'all have any questions on it.
Mr. Ford, the recycling trailer.
Yeah, yeah. Put for Tim. Uh, there you go. You have anything to say on Tim?
No, no, really. It just boils down to, we've got, our purple truck's been laying there since we got it, ain't it? And we have filed it. Like I told you, I'm about don't wanna drive that purple truck. Anybody else, they'll bitch and argue and carry on. But the transmission is out of it. Several other things going wrong with it, so we're probably looking to get it back on the road.
Seems to have a lane that you need for the truck.
And we did, we, he was looking at, let us use it last week when we had a meeting at Match Bridge. So I drove it, Greg drove it, it's a recent little truck.
Transmission, everything, uh, is what you're looking for as far as heavy-duty transmission and.
These are all eight. Going up to three, or to Tom Dudley, it is the extra transmission. Now that purple truck's been, stolen on our side, walking them five, six years now.
That's all right, yeah. Is that took front end or?
We've done three front ends, I need. Right now, you take the steering, we're gonna go about three-quarters turn before you catch.
We don't need it on the road.
No. Well, faster you go, better it is.
We don't want you going very fast. Where's the funding for that truck come from?
We have money left. We have money left, well, we have never used any of the money we's made off the roll-off truck.
Yeah, we, we can use that, uh, as extra, as the extra money, because we made.
I don't know exactly.
Use, use around fifty, fifty-five thousand off, off the roll-off, extra roll-off, so it's, it's, uh, you know, it's coming from something. We used and sold and made a good profit off of it. So basically, it's, it's not gonna be taking anything from our, our budget situation. Yeah. Alright, um, any questions on this, on this bid? Uh, do I have a motion to accept the bid? Motion by Dennis? Second by jail, all in favor for accepting this bid, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed likewise? Alright, motion carries.
Would you end it up where you give that to Tommy?
Next is, is dispatch, did you wanna do anything on dispatch or just the sirens?
Just the sirens.
Alright, we'll go ahead and pass the dispatch, we'll go into the sirens.
Dennis, you wanna do the list, or you got that list you sent me? You got a copy of it? Okay. I, I got it. Uh, just to update everybody on the sirens, Dennis has pretty much got everything electrical fixed when it comes to the sirens. I'll just go over the list, here, the Verton Ridge, it hadn't worked in some time. Uh, he found that the power was off to it, after, uh, finding that the power was off and troubleshooting, found that the siren motor was bad. With the help of Clark Energy, they changed that motor out for us, it works manually now. When I say manually, it don't mean you can go to the pole and make it work, it means me or Dennis, it knows how to open the box and hit the connectors. As we going down the list to, uh, let's say Meta Green, there was a bad pulley that was the, the, the pulley off, was off the drive motor. It turns the siren, it's a hundred percent fixed now. Now, when we go to Clay City Fire Department, had a bad radio, Ricky Watson reprogrammed that radio and we've replaced it, working a hundred percent. Going down the list, the one in Clay City there by the river, next to the Mexican Restaurant, found nothing connected, and it was, there was wires hanging down, had Clark Energy come down, marked the hot and the grounds. Connected several parts missing from the control panel. Dennis had to, uh, pretty much rerun all the conduit and all the wiring to the, to the missing parts after putting those in. Works manually when you, uh, uh, cross over the connectors. Ahead start, we found a bad battery not allowing the radio to work, replaced the battery, and we're gonna have the radio pro, programs for that one. The road department is a hundred percent working, the Lions Club is working, me and Dennis found that the ground wires has been cut off of the pole, we have new ground wires. That were donated, it was no cost to the county for those. The health department, a hundred percent working, Stanton City Park, we've not tested it, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's always working. The drive-in, works manually, but no radio communication. Also, we've talked with tourism, will be on their agenda to speak about, they pay the utility bills, they're leaving that siren on all the time where it cannot be turned off. The rest area, works fine manually, no radio communication. Now with that said, Ricky Watson is installing a new antenna, new cable today at the dispatch, uh, he has the controller down. Myself, Justin Rice, Mike Lockard, uh, went last week to Estill County, we've got all of their radios. Uh, they've been less with Ricky each programming those, we'll get those back today, uh, me and Dennis and Justin, we'll get those installed in each siren. So hopefully, within about a week, we're gonna be able to, uh, have fully functioning sirens, cause the only two that had the mechanical problems were the two listed, the otherwise, it was just a radio communication problem. And, uh, also, we've had two citizens, one on Neil Silva, one on Winchester Road, has indicated that the county can install two sirens on their property, they'll sign any kind of agreement to add two more to the list. Uh, with Estill County, they gave us sirens, they had some as new as two thousand fifteen up to two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we have those free, that's gonna be donated, but, uh, uh, everybody really needs to know, without Dennis, we'd be paying electrician. You know, say jail's helped, other nights, Eddie, myself, Justin and Mike Lockard, you know, we, we went out after hours to, to make sure these work.
How's the, uh, you said you're gonna hook up a new repeater to control those, is that going?
Well, what they did, uh, we, uh, after Ricky got talking with Dave, the radio guy, he found a solution of a repeater that was already in place, that he's switching channels. And, uh, he's putting a new antenna in today, running a new coax. Just to, and, and all the radios were done programmed, we've dropped them off, and Ricky's had those programmed for a few days, and, uh, you know, uh, I think we'll fix it where the radios talk to each other correctly. Yes, yes, we're that, we'll have communication. And in the near future, we're gonna have it as well, where, uh, you all as magistrates, uh, department heads, when I say that, fire department chiefs, uh, myself, Justin, Eddie, will have a capability from a handheld, if we had a major disaster, we lost the dispatch, you can pull off, pull up and set those off with a handheld radio as well. But we'll limit that to the people that has access, cause we don't want them being set off at two or three o'clock in the morning for no reason. So, uh, the siren deal is, is coming to a close, and I think everybody will be happy in the, in the coming days.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Estill, Estill County really has, has been generous, uh, Clark Energy, you send them guys out, thank them. They sent about a ten-man crew last week on a day's notice to, to do theirs as well, and, uh.
When we get this all done, I, I think, uh, we should make effort to thank them, and then.
Of course.
Yes. Also, some of us go to Estill County Fiscal Court meeting to thank them personally.
Yes, sir. They're willing to help us any way they can, I mean, we've got, but it looks just like them out of the box that, that Estill County has gave us.
And, and that's the thing, you know, that, uh, you know, what's this, what's this taken, two, three weeks?
Two or three weeks, and that's working at night, cause Dennis has a full-time job.
That's, that's one thing, uh, Dennis, you know, a-again, you know, we, we couldn't ask for any, any better, you know, and Larry the same way, and, and the other, other magistrates and, and people that's ever worked on these, you know, Ricky Watson, you know, uh, no. I'll, I'll be, I'll be honest with you, something that, that, uh, kinda, kinda irritates me is that this is, this has been going on for about six years now, and something that I've asked, uh, other people about is, is why? You know, why has this been going on so long? You know, that, 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 uh, you know, wherever it first came in, you know, the issue was that we couldn't find the parts to fix things. You can't find the parts, and come to find out that eighty percent of the sirens that wouldn't work, and it wasn't a mechanical issue. It was a communication issue, it was a radio issue that should have been fixed. And, you know, uh, after we, after we got the, the sirens from Estill County, you know, that it, it integrated with our sirens, you know, uh, Dennis and Clark Energy, you know, like, like Larry said, they, they went out here, they, they put a new one up, it's working, everything's working. Don't know where the communicate, miscommunication was, you know, whether some contractor, I don't know, uh, you know, because in the past, they, they, they paid somebody some money to, supposed to been maintaining them, supposed to been fixing them, don't know what happened, but I will guarantee the people one thing, from here on out, it won't happen again.
Well, since we brought that up, I guess it's, you can do this, I don't know, probably the next one, uh, like a motion, that we appoint someone, uh, to do that, like Ricky or somebody's knowledge of the love that you can do that.
Yeah, we.
And, and, and as, at the same time, they can keep our radio system going.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can, we can do that at our next fiscal meeting, and that's, that's the thing, you know, finding somebody that, that is, is reputable, you know, about working on them and stuff, and, and, you know.
Okay, if you look at the, you know, he alluded to it, and I, I looked at, at some of the stuff he did, well, we got a Mexican, we burned it.
Oh, yeah.
So they kept hearing.
Well, the, the, the radios, you know, some of the radios are twenty-two, they, they were manufactured in twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, some of the sirens, same way, you know, that, that's, you know, that's saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, man, Eddie, we got, we've got sixteen brand-new batteries, and when I say batteries, these sirens have a forty-eight volt system, that there's four batteries in the bottom of each of these. We have sixteen of those that came from Estill County that are within a couple of years old, so at a discounted rate, we were getting those batteries for like a ninety-eight dollars a piece, so we've got sixteen of those that are just, uh, surplus now that we'll have extra.
And that's where you need somebody to, to check them.
Yeah. And we need monthly.
Yeah, we, we will be doing that. Uh, also, also something else, uh, that, that we've discussed too, is, is along with, uh, you know, the, the property up on Neil Silva and Winchester Road, we're looking about, uh, uh, put some more sirens in, uh, maybe one up around Middle Fork Fire Department, uh, one up at Natural Bridge, you know, maybe one up, uh, Baker Ridge or, or something that we can alert, uh, you know, the hikers and stuff out, out, uh, out in the gorge, that, uh, you know, severe weather or something's coming in, you know. We've got the extra, extra sirens now that we can, we can do that. And again, that's compliments of Estill County Fiscal Court, you know, without them.
Yeah, I think we should make a point of going over there and pushing them.
Oh, yeah, 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 I, I totally agree, in which, uh, I've already talked to Donnie, uh, a couple of times, and, and we did express, but it's, it's better to go into open meeting, that way, uh, along with Judge Watson and, and the, the magistrates, you know, the people of, of, uh, Estill County, you know, uh, we appreciate all of them for doing that. But, uh, hopefully, you know, by the next fiscal court meeting, all the sirens will be working.
And we're probably gonna start doing Saturdays, that way people's home on Saturdays, the people that work out of town, we're, we're gonna do a monthly test. We'll do these twelve months out of the year, we're not just gonna do them during the summer months, you know, we're gonna do those providing there's no bad weather in there, we're gonna test those every Saturday, when I pick a time on Saturdays.
Well, we can, we can do like the first Saturday of the month, at, you know, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, whatever time, you know, we, we can pick that, but.
I like that, we can, yeah, for two, blow that one siren, emergency, it's all over down, the dispatch goes down.
Yeah.
We can still warn the people, most like we do now, we just get out the vehicles and go through the.
And it's what you all did, Jay, the last time, I had to call Middle Fork Fire Department, but we already had a plan in place, we knew the storms were coming. So Eddie had a meeting here with all of the, uh, Fire Department and, and all, and Middle Fork went to the campgrounds, uh, jail as well, they went to Natural Bridge, you know, and they, they let those campers know, you know, hey, we've got bad weather today, so.
The thing, the thing about this, you know, and I, I, I will say it here and I'll say it anywhere, you know, that the fiscal court we have right now, and I'm talking about our magistrates, are very, very safety, uh, citizen proactive people that, that wanna do what's right for our community. Uh, it's, it's not our political deal, you know, getting private money or whatever, you know, we're out to work for the people, and that's who we're gonna work for, and, and I can't say anything better about our, our fiscal court members, you know, they, they do an excellent job. Just like this, you know, they, they took the bull by the horns and, and they got it done, and I, I do appreciate that, that's, that's really, really good, for minimal cost, you know.
And like I said, it's a no cost, me and Josh, and it's not even our department, but we saw the need, and, and you know, we, we, we charge no overtime, we don't get paid an overtime rate. Dennis doesn't get paid an overtime rate, jail does, and Mike Lockard, you know, it's, it's not, we're charging to come out here after hours, we just want them fixed.
Everybody does an excellent job, so, so, again, thank, thank every one of you that, that, uh, that did it, and, and I do really appreciate it, anything else, Larry?
Thank Patrick and too, they, they went and picked up some parts for us in Estill County, of the old sirens, and he's got me a place to store these batteries in the dry, these boxes, so you know, we're gonna, we'll have access if we need them in the future.
Yes. Good, good. Alright, any other questions, comments, or anything like that? Alright, we'll go ahead and, and move on to, next is, uh, uh, road department, and saw waste on this worldwide equipment on the Mack trucks. Um, Patrick and.
If they ain't Mack no more?
No, no, Patrick and Daniel and Tim went to a meeting up in Louisa, uh, last week, and, uh, they found us some interesting news, so I, I'll, uh, I'll let y'all.
Well, Worldwide Equipment, uh, we met with, uh, Scott P. Carr, Danum Wood Auction Company had representative there as well at this meeting. So there's some concerns that we're not gonna be able to get a Mack truck this go, this time, just because of production delays and things of that nature. Uh, so that being said, Scott P. Carr with Worldwide Equipment has worked with J M Wood Auction Company uh, in order to find an appropriate, um, alternative truck that will work for us, that we can actually get. Uh, and you know, it, it was kind of, I'd never thought of it in this regard, but the, the representative from J M Wood Company, Auction Company, rather, he, uh, he made it very clear that these trucks are not built for us, they're not built for the government entity that's gonna use them for one year. They're built for the second buyer, so we have to find a way to be able to utilize them, and we have, Tim uses his roll-off on a daily basis. We've been using our, our Mack tri-axle on a daily basis for the past several weeks, uh, you know, there may be times it may sit, but we, we, we get a lot of use out of these trucks, that being said, the alternative truck that they have, they have put together for us, and it's a quote in, in those packets that you all have, um, is a Kenworth T eight eighty. Um, but there's also a packet with the auction results detailing how, how these Kenworth trucks sell at the auction. I think the results are from this, this past March.
Patrick, can you do me a favor? Uh, and, and thank Mitchell for, for videotaping all this, where, where people that can't be here, uh, you know, they can, they can watch this and, and understand. Could you go back to the, to kind of the beginning about, about the, the trucks and, and, you know, using them for a year, then auctioning them off, and, and how that works? That way, uh, people knows that, that we're not just coming in here buying trucks and, and.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, so, I think it was, the scholar saying it was what, twenty-five years ago, he started working with Worldwide Equipment. So this is a lease program where we lease the truck for a year, we use it for a year, it's brand-new. Um, at, at the end of that lease, we pay the lease off and send it to an auction. So originally, this program was designed for us to get a new truck every year to use, that way we have no maintenance costs, the only thing we do is put fuel in it in general, you know, greasing and things of that nature, fluid checks, um, so we use it for a year, then auction it off, it was never intended to make a profit. But with the production delays and, and production issues that we've seen since COVID, uh, it has actually given us an opportunity to profit quite well off these trucks, so Tim's roll-off, I think, sold for fifty, sixty thousand above the original purchase price last year. Our, our Mack dump truck did the same thing. So, they're now where they can't get the Mack trucks quick enough to be able to supply all these municipalities like Powell County. Um, they're having to develop and put together another package with a different brand of truck that they can actually get to be able to sell. So, and that was the Kenworth T eight eight.
Interrupt that, but people don't understand, state gets a discount too.
Yes.
And that's how come we make so much money is to the state.
To contract.
The contract price.
Yes, Kenworth and Mack through Worldwide Equipment, both have state contract in Kentucky. Um, and also, thank you for bringing that up, Tim, because government, where we're tax exempt, there was no excise tax or sales tax, so we're already at an eighteen percent purchasing advantage versus someone in the public. Um, so that being said, we're, we've already got that discount coming off, now where we send these trucks to auction, J M Wood Auction Company guarantees us eighty-five percent return on our regional purchase, purchase price. So.
That's good, and that, and that's how we, we just purchased this truck, is through the excess, uh, money of, of his roll-off truck, so.
And I, I might add that I appreciate you guys, because y'all take such gear, could cure those trucks, they look like new ones.
Oh, yeah.
They're not beat up, take care of them.
Tomorrow line's gonna come in and work with that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. So basically, now then, now that we have to approve, uh, well, we don't have to approve, but, uh, you want us to approve the Kenworths instead of the Max this year, and the, uh, projected, uh, quote total for the trucks, is that correct?
Uh, well, there is also another thing.
Okay.
So, in the auction results, these trucks, they've, they've built this package for us with them. Um, the high-selling trucks have the Allison transmission. The actual quote that you all have is for, uh, and, forgive me if I'm wrong, I think it's an Eaton Endurance eighteen-speed transmission, which they said.
Bottom for additional.
Yeah, yes. So we don't have any live auction results of trucks with that particular transmission. But the ones with the Allisons were the high sellers at that J M Wood Auction Company.
So for this extra money, uh, being more beneficial to, to go ahead and. So for this extra money, being more beneficial to, to go ahead and improve them?
Yeah, I think for a resale value at the end of the lease, I think we'd be money you had to go ahead and.
And it's, and it's not that much more, you know, you would have been sixty-six hundred dollars, and no doubt what you want to profit off of that.
Yeah, I mean.
The other problem with the roll off is, if I don't have a roll off to haul containers, I think I was paying forty-five thousand dollars to Red River. Plus another fifteen thousand stubs in a year's time, just to haul my containers. So we're helping the county out by doing this already, instead of paying out so much money.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, now with auction time, and the way you all take good care of them, Kenworths will bring more to back.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and every, and every year that, that, you know, last year, I'm saying every year, but, but last year, you know, you came to me and, and was telling me about it, you know, that you, you made some. Decent profit off them trucks, and, and it's bringing it back into, into buying these other trucks, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's a win-win situation, as far as I'm concerned.
And it is, that one of these days, the truck prices will come back down, but before, I think Matt Patrick was looking, we were still making two or three thousand. End of year.
And had no maintenance costs, that's, that's the big thing, I mean, you had to put brakes on, on a truck like that, you're gonna spend thousands.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreed. Skip right there.
Absolutely.
All right, so we, we just need to accept.
What would be your cost to go out and buy a truck, haul your rock, or, or a contract, yeah, what would be the total cost for that, versus this?
I haven't actually, I had a idea that.
What one at, two thirds?
Two thirty?
For a truck.
Yeah.
Two thirty to two fifty.
So we're, we're looking at this one at two forty-two, and that's you using them for a year with no maintenance or anything like that, you know, it's. And then, then taking it to reselling it, so.
And the high, the high sellers in that auction, which I expect ours to be one of those high sellers, because we take great care of those trucks, I mean, they're clean. You know, we, we spend a week cleaning them before they go to auction.
And they go to auction in Alabama, you're right.
Yeah, we're looking at it.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and, you know, the high sellers in March were two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, with the same, same model trucks, while we've been discussing.
So there's, there's potential making fifty, sixty thousand dollars off these trucks, each, each one of them, not, not, not all combined, each one of them.
And we get three trucks going this year down to auction.
Yeah, yeah, because we purchased the, the next one, yeah.
And I didn't ask him about that, but I, when I talked to him next time, I was asking for a deal.
Still good on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds, sounds good to me.
I make the most.
Motion to accept the, the quote from Worldwide. Motion made by J L, seconded by Brian, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Anybody opposed likewise? All right, motion carries. All right, that looks like that's, that's it on the agenda. Do we have any other questions, comments, or anything like that, that you want to bring up? All right, can you get a mo?
Is that the thing you have?
For having sale. Okay, thanks. Okay, motion to.
Can I get you opening?
Not in here, we, yeah, we're on the agenda, we can't, we can't open it in here. We'll go ahead, motion made in adjournment by Dennis, seconded by J L, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed likewise? All right, motion carries. Thank you, guys.